And they give you like, what, six months, I think, warning? Then, as long as you meet that submittal date, even if you have to add more documents or whatever, as long as the application is accepted, that's the date. So I don't know. It might be good to just clarify in the, you know, adoption ordinance, the, you know, when it takes effect.
Yeah, so.
I think that's a good practice.
Yeah, we try not to pull the rug out from under people when they're, especially if they've been in the process for a while. If it was early in the process, we'd probably tell them they had to meet the new standard. And then the difference with zoning is that zoning is not retroactive. And so any zoning standard only applies from like this point forward. Whereas the general ordinance applies, can apply retroactively.
Really?
Yeah, like an event, well, it'd be like a speed limit or something. So, speed limits of general ordinance, just because someone drove 100 miles an hour, or 70 miles an hour on a road, and then we changed it to 55, they don't get to keep driving at 75.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, think about it. Everybody, they built, people built on their property based on zoning. They changed the zoning laws. The whole city or the whole township would have to change or something.
It'd just be nonconforming.
Yeah, the pre-existing nonconforming is the term that we use. That's, you know, people like residents who don't deal with zoning every day would call that grandfathered, like your grandfather. And as long as you're there and operating before the ordinance changed, then you can just keep operating under those, under that standard. And everyone after you then has to meet the standard, which is different.
Well, that's the same thing. It has no, yeah, that's the same thing. It has no retroactive application.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, thank you.
So it's not necessarily a clear-cut answer. But it, and it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen that often. It really, you know, occasionally it does. I've heard of other communities where this has happened, where they've really tried to have people follow the new ordinance. And it usually ends up in court and becomes a big mess. So we try to avoid that if we can.
Don't want to go to court.
Um, Rakesh, I have a question for you. Um, did anyone ever follow up with you about training for the, um, the hybrid now that they have the equipment in the town hall? You're muted.
Uh, no.
Okay, I will email Jessica and copy you. So you guys, so we can figure out, um, you know, when that training can happen. And if there's anyone else in the planning commission that wants to be trained, we can add them.
Just as a point of information, Jessica is on vacation for the next 10 days and not answering emails. So you might want to copy your message to Christie as well.
Okay, I think Christie's, is she out now too? Well, we'll do Jessica, Christie, Fran, and Mary. How's that?
The whole crew.
So.
Yeah.
What's the training all about as the hybrid model, meaning like working?
Yeah, the township hall, people should go take a look. Um, because there's, no one's going to be using the Diaz anymore. Um, it's tables and there's a projection screen and also a, um, a monitor in there.
Yeah.
So the idea is that we can do hybrid meetings. Um, and in the packet was the, um, a copy of the updated in-person Zoom meeting procedures.
Okay.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Great. Go ahead, Kim.
I'm, I'm sorry. Did I hear you say that the procedures were in our packet?
Yes. Bob, did you have a?
Yeah, Jan, did you say that if anybody else wanted to be trained on the equipment to let you know? I would love that training.
Okay.
It could apply to other groups that I'm into, so.
Right, absolutely. Because with the Open Meetings Act, if you can do the Zoom meetings, it really helps, you know, people who are on vacation or whatever, uh, family obligations, whatever. It makes it universally accessible.
Takes the pressure off of others.
Okay, I will include you on that email then. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Like, have all the commissioners gotten this training already?
No, no.
Oh.
No, I'm volunteering to get some training now.
Or you just suggested to me? Is that what you? Why do you suggest to me?
Training.
I think it'll be handy for the Environmental Task Force too, so.
Oh, you see, okay, okay.
How about just training?
How about just training? Yeah, that too. Hey, Jay.
Okay.
Now, the Open Meetings Act and expertise and the process of planning before we get it. Maybe we should have a.
And I think the APA is also starting to do more, um, training specifics again for, uh, you know, commissions and.
It's a nice one that Doug did for community-wide, one that Doug did a while ago.
Yeah.
Yep, it was.
Yeah, it might be good to, you know, add on a little Open Meetings Act stuff, especially, you know, if we're starting the Environmental Task Force. So people just understand some of the, the, um, the foundations of democracy, if you will.
So I see it's seven o'clock.
All righty.
And, uh, the only planning commissioner that I don't see waiting is Chris.
And Chris will not be in attendance tonight. And one of the things that we'll do is we'll, um, appoint Jay as secretary, acting secretary.
Okay, so.
Unless somebody else, unless somebody else wants to do it.
So, Jan, on the count, on the count of three, I'm going to start recording. So, um, three, two, one, we are.
Recording in progress.
Live and record.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Sayo Township Planning Commission for July 12th, 2021. It is 7:01 and I'm calling the meeting to order. Um, uh, we're using the Zoom web platform for members of the public who have joined us by video or phone. Your microphones are muted, but will be opened when appropriate in order to minimize disruptions to the meeting and connectivity problem, problems. Only members of the board of the commission will have video. Applicants and staff have video access but have been asked to turn off their cameras until called upon. At that time, they may use screen share capabilities if appropriate. All chat and question and answer boxes have been disabled, probably. Um, the meeting is being held via video conference in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public body and members of the public participating electronically will be considered present at the meeting and may participate as a physically present, physically present. All members of participating from Sayo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. If members of the body are participating from elsewhere, they need to identify the county municipality and state in the roll call. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak during public hearing, if any. Um, and we do have a public hearing tonight and during public comment periods. Uh, instructions for public comment and hearing will be provided at that time. Um, so, uh, we, um, our regular secretary is, um, on vacation. And so, um, let, let's do a roll call and then I'll entertain a motion um, to appoint Jay Holland as acting secretary for this evening. Um, so, um, Holland, just, I'm doing roll call for who's here.
Oh. Um, Dexter Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Thank you. Uh, Chang is not present. Uh, Corto.
Present in Ames, Story County, Iowa.
Oh, we're, we're beyond, almost Midwest. Um, Commissioner Hyde.
Present, Sayo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Moore.
Present, Sayo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Sharma.
Present, Sayo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
And Culbertson, present, Sayo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. All right, we have quorum. And, um, before we adopt the agenda, I will entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Holland as acting secretary for this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Corto, supported by Commissioner Hyde. And I'll do a, a roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
And Commissioner Culbertson, yes. So the motion carried unanimously. All right, I'll have Commissioner Holland, thank you very much. And I'll entertain a motion, um, for the adoption of the agenda. Oh, um, Doug, yes.
Um, just a, uh, point, um, clarification, a point of interest.
Yeah.
Is based on the public notice that was given for the public hearing tonight. Um, the public notice indicated both, uh, the township hall and Zoom that this meeting would be. And obviously, it's not at Township Hall. So we have, um, our planning zoning secretary Fran Zuma is stationed at the Township Hall right now, trying to direct anyone that might show up at the Township Hall to be here. Um, I asked her to text me if anyone showed up. And so far, I talked to her just before the meeting started. She was there at the meeting giving people, if they show up, giving people directions on how to participate. Um, but as of right now, there's no one, she hasn't texted. So apparently, no one's, everyone understood it had to be, it was a Zoom meeting. Um, however, that being said, I would suggest that we, that we put the, um, discussion on the event ordinance first to make sure that if anyone happens to show up at the Township Hall a few minutes late, that they would have an opportunity to, um, jump on their phone and participate in the Zoom meeting. We do have 10 people in attendance tonight. Um, so apparently, the word got out that this was a Zoom meeting properly. Uh, but just kind of as a overabundance of caution, we have Fran sitting at the door of the Township Hall room, um, making sure that no one got misdirected. So, uh, that's my suggestion is that we put the event ordinance before the public hearing just to make sure people have a chance to get back to their homes.
Would, would someone like to, um, move adoption of the agenda with moving unfinished business up ahead of, um, public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Right, Secretary Holland, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Corto?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland? Yes, Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes. Okay, the agenda's been adapted as revised. Um, communication correspondence. Has anyone received any communications or correspondence? Okay, let the record reflect none. Um, there are no presentations requested by the planning commission. So we will move on to unfinished business, the event ordinance, which is for a discussion tonight. So Doug, I'll hand it over to you and we'll start there.
So this is a, um, second time the planning commission has seen this, uh, or these ordinance, uh, uh, you know, changes. Actually, it's a, it's a full new proposed ordinance. And this has to do with, um, allowing special events within the township, uh, which basically are large gatherings of, of people within the community. Could be like a craft show or an art show or an antique art show. Or, uh, we had a request, I think the sort of, uh, well, it came to, had it for a couple of reasons. Several years ago, Knights of Columbus wanted to do a carnival on the Knights of Columbus property on Dexter and Arbor Road. And we didn't have any kind of ordinance to allow it. So that's when this started. Um, it never really went anywhere after that, partly because we didn't have any other requests. Um, and this came up again when the Dexter Days folks wanted to, uh, uh, operate out of the, I think it was the American Legion, might have been the American Legion Hall or might have been, might have been Knights of Columbus as well. But, um, out there on Dexter Chelsea Road, and we had no mechanism to allow such a thing. So this kind of got brought back up. And, uh, if you remember, I think this was on one of our May agendas. There were some suggested changes to the event ordinance. And if you have your copy in front of you there or, or online, uh, the new changes.
It's 40 in the packet for folks, I believe.
Yeah, on page 40, I just, I just have my own copy here. But, um, on that page, you can see the, uh, the new sections are underlined. The old sections that were, that I revised based on our previous discussion are shown as strikeout or strike through. And so the big changes here, um, was to bump up. And we, we talked about this generally. I don't know that there's a consensus on the planning commission, but there was some discussion, if you remember, our, our major events were events that were over 150 people. Um, and, uh, that was changed from 300 in the original draft. And I think some of the commissioners, um, you know, wanted to consider, give some thought to putting it back at 300 participants rather than 150. So I bumped that up. So that's, that's reflected in both the major event and the minor events. Uh, by the way, if you're, if, just to remind everyone, in case you didn't read the ordinance again, uh, major events, um, are those that are 300 persons or more or extend more than two days, even if they're under 300 people. And major events can only be approved by the township board after a public hearing. Uh, minor events are those events under 300 participants for up to two days. Um, and those can be approved by the township zoning administrator. And then there are limitations on the number of, number of these events a particular property can have, like a major event. You can have one major event or one minor event per year or, uh, two minor events, but you can't have two major events in the course of a year. So this allows, um, this isn't supposed to be allowing things like, for example, but I know that the wedding barn issue is a big, you know, garners a lot of discussion here in the township. But this really isn't that. This is, there's a whole nother section of the zoning ordinance that deals with, with event barns in ag zoning. And this is really more geared towards community events, special events, uh, that sort of thing. Um, we also extended our exemption section to be a little clearer on those things that are exempt. Because of course, no one wants someone who's having a graduation party to have to come in and get a special events permit. So we, uh, uh, tried to make it clear that, um, uses that are customary to the underlying zoning district are exempt. You know, things like private parties, picnics, um, estate sales, auctions, things like that. Um, you know, and as far as a commercial business will go, things like, uh, sidewalk sales, we're not going to require a business to come in and get a permit for, you know, a sidewalk sale or something like that. Um, and then there are some, uh, criteria, though pretty much we didn't change the criteria. Um, I bumped back the time. One thing I did change was that special event, it says special events at C under section 7.4, special events as required by disorder shall be prohibited from operating between the hours of 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM. So 10:00 PM is a cutoff, the previous was 11:00 PM. So trying to back that off a little bit. And then, um, duration, it doesn't matter what the special event is. It can't go more than three days. But, yeah, that'd be a major event, but that, that would be the maximum. And then indicating a parking standard, you have to, have to provide parking. Um, and then, uh, there's an application. Actually, that's one of the attachments you should have is, is a proposed application form. And then I added some deadline, uh, some additional deadline stuff here. It indicates that a deadline, uh, it simply used to say for 30 days. Yeah, to have your application prior to the event. But I, I don't think 30 days is enough for a major public hearing. And so, um, I bumped, I bumped the major event application up to 60 days. And the minor event, uh, application is 30 days prior to the event. And added some language that if it's, if it's less than 30 days for a minor event or less than 60 days for a major event, that we just simply, uh, um, you know, don't accept the applica, don't accept the application or, or the application fee. And then, uh, uh, the other changes, we get into some of the things that are required, just some clarifications. We already had this stuff in there, but some clarifications. Um, getting review letters from the county sheriff. We, we just said, you had, they had to show police and fire protection. But I really, I, I want to make sure everyone's clear that we're supposed to get a letter from the county sheriff's department and a letter from the fire department. Um, and the same with some of these other, uh, requirements. Um, and, and so, and, and that, that was about, I think that was about the changes. Let's see if I did anything else here. Um, and then the very end, almost on the last page, I added a little section on denials about, you know, how applicant would be notified of a denial. And, uh, so we basically send them a letter or if it was going to the township board, they'd get the minutes of the township board. So this is a standalone ordinance. This is not a zoning ordinance. So the planning commission will never, you won't be holding a public hearing because that's not the process for a, uh, that's not the process for a, uh, um, an ordinance, standalone ordinance. Uh, but the township board did want the planning commission to review this before they took it up. They looked at it once and had some comments. I made those changes. You said, you guys saw it once, this is the second time. So I guess what I, what I would expect is if this is in, uh, pretty good shape and maybe there's just one or two more additional changes that we would send this on back to the township board for their action. Um, so that's, uh, that's it. And I'll try to, uh, answer any questions if, uh, anyone has any.
Questions. Commissioner Corto.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate that you did get, I, many of the points that I remember us discussing. I did have a question, though, about application fees. Did we agree that that should be the same for major and minor events? And just because $500 for a minor event, although I know we're bumping up the total number of people, so it's now 300 people. But that seems like a lot of money. And I understand that we need to fund the zoning officer to be reviewing those. So, so maybe that makes sense. But I, I, I just wonder if you could clarify, had, had we discussed specific amounts?
No, the, the, I don't remember a specific amount. I remember there was some discussion I had in my notes about maybe having a sliding scale or something about the fee. Um, but the fee will be, I, I guess I put the fee in there as kind of a placeholder. Uh, the fee will be determined by the township board. So if, you know, if you guys wanted it to be, say, 250 for a minor and 500 for a major, that, you know, I could make that change and that, that could go on, pass that on to the township board. But ultimately, anything, anything to do with fees and fees, you know, fee schedules is established by, by the township board. So that would have to be, um, that would have to be determined at that point. But, but yeah, there were some, there was some discussion about a sliding scale. I frankly, I didn't know what to do with that, so I just left it at 500.
If I could just briefly follow up. I mean, you know, we're working very hard in our fee structures and in all kinds of areas to make the fee actually reflect what it costs the township. So, so from your perspective, what, what is reasonable for what it costs you to review the minor events? I mean, that might be a way to think about what that fee should be.
Well, the minor event, yeah, it, it would be similar to a zoning compliance certificate. And so, um, you know, all of the minor event stuff would be done in-house. Uh, they'd, they'd be done when I, you know, I'm, I'm there in the office on Mondays and Thursdays. So this isn't something that would go out to, like us, to do a special review from Carlin Roman Associates. This would be just, this is, this, I envisioned this just being an in-house review. And so, um, the, the minor would not be that, uh, much, you know, that extensive of a review. Uh, the major would, might be a little bit more. And there is a public hearing required for a major. So I, I would say similar to, um, a zoning compliance, might be a little more detailed than a zoning compliance. I could put a little thought into that before it goes to the township board.
Uh, Commissioner Holland?
Doug, how would this apply to, um, facilities that hold events on a regular basis? For instance, the Dexter KFC and their fish fries.
Anything like that is exempt. Is that certainly the intention? So it. Yeah, well, under, um, on page two, the top of page two, um, it indicates any event held entirely within the confines of a permanently enclosed and covered structure.
That's true.
That is compliance with existing codes and ordinances addressing the use of the structure, including approved banquets, facilities, lodge halls, churches, and school facilities. So anything, you know, Eukanite, uh, you know.
Good job. Thank you.
Anything like that is exempt.
I also wonder maybe that, uh, the fees may be a, a 200 for a minor and 500 for a major. But like you say, it's up to the, the trustees. Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Hyde?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, sort of process, not necessarily within the ordinance. But, um, the first one I had has to do with section 7.7 on page four, um, which is page 43 of a, the packet. And, uh, the second paragraph from the bottom talks about notice to the neighboring, to the neighbors. And, uh, it, this may be standard language. That's why I'm asking and saying it's a process issue. When we, do we, is this typical that we mail it and start the clock and give 15 days from that point? Because 15 days might be what the post office takes in the near future, the way things are going. So is that our typical clock for notification?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is, uh, this is the standard language for a public hearing, for any public hearing that we have.
Yeah. I don't want to take on that whole thing, but I just wondered about that. And the other question I have, in, in general, when we put out a new ordinance, how do we publicize that for the township population? I mean, how do they know that there's a new requirement that we're putting forth?
Um, technically, it has to be published in the local. I think the only requirement is that it be published in the local newspaper of general circulation, which I think the township just started using the Sometimes, which is like the little Dexter Sometimes paper. Um, so that's the only requirement that I know of. Um, it's not uncommon for a community to also, you know, if it's an ordinance that would impact folks like this, uh, maybe may put in a newsletter article or something like that. But technically, there's, there's just, there's a requirement that it be published. And that's, that's the only requirement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah. It's a, notice shall be given to owners of property. It said, notice shall be given to owners of property that is the subject of the request. Do you mean owners of property that are adjacent to the event property? Or what are we trying to say there?
Yeah, the subject request is the actual owner of the property. And then, and that also says everyone can 300 feet of property. Because sometimes the applicant isn't the owner. Although we do require authorization. But we would just want to make sure that the actual owner of the property knows when the public hearing is.
I had a question about activities that require darkness, like fireworks. And I was thinking, I think, you know, a movie night or something like that outdoor. Is there a place where you can apply for an exception to sort of the time? Or anything else that we, you know, don't think of?
No, there's not in the current language, but that's probably not a bad idea to throw a few sentences in there for an exception, which I could do.
I have another question.
Commissioner Moore and then Commissioner Corte.
That notice petition that I was just asking about, is there a requirement that the applicant show the township that notice is given?
Well, we do the notice.
We send out the notice, okay.
Yeah, so we send out the notice. And we keep, we keep record of each of those. And it's not uncommon for, you know, residents to ask about the notice. And I always tell people just to go to the township office and, you know, the files are all, they're all public record. And you can, it's a good way to let people understand how notice is given and who received notice. And every once in a while, we do make a mistake, so it's a good check. But yeah, township sends those notices out.
Commissioner Corte.
Just following up on Sherri Culbertson's comment. I wonder if we should make it clear that we would consider exceptions on Fridays or Saturdays. Do we want to put some constraints about that? Because I just am, I am concerned about granting an exception for a Wednesday or a Monday night, you know, a school night, but.
Or it could be a holiday, holidays.
Right, Friday night, Saturday or holiday, something like that.
In the other discussion. All right. Are people open to, we don't have to act on it, right? It can just, we can just sort of say that we're, that we've had our discussion and it can go forward to the board of trustees.
Yeah, I think it would be okay to make a motion just to say that, you know, you could even just say based on the comments of tonight's meeting, you know, that we're recommending this going to the township board, something like that.
Then I'll entertain a motion to that effect. Someone want to move that motion? Commissioner Moore.
I move that the, that the special, I'm sorry, the event ordinance, based on the discussion that we had tonight, the planning commission, that the event ordinance as revised be put forth before the board of trustees.
Support. Support by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion, Commissioner Corte?
I don't know if this is an amendment to the motion or just a point about transmission, but could we pass along the suggestion that this be, we recommend this be notified in the newsletter and the website and so on to make people aware of this? Is that an amendment or is that just part of our transmission?
A friendly amendment.
Okay, then I offer that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hyde? Okay. Then go ahead and do a roll call vote on passing along of the events ordinance with the amendment about notification. Roll call vote, please.
Get in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Corte?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes. All right. Pass, yes, Mr. Luhan.
And this is nothing, so this is done. But I just wanted to mention that Fran Zuma, the planning department secretary, texted me and that no one had come to the door. I think we can get back onto the regular agenda. And I don't know if, I don't know, I think we maybe got a little mixed up with the agenda. But unless you put this first, but there's, I don't think you have public comment yet.
No, we have not. We wanted to have a public comment until we made sure there was, there weren't any, anyone, there wasn't anyone that the township called, so yes.
Good, good, yeah, so no one, no one came, so that was good.
All right, so, great. Then at this time, we'll open up the meeting for public comment. And I think I can do that without, I don't, do I need a vote for that, Doug, or I do, no?
No, I think it's just an agenda item.
Okay.
Declare it open, yeah.
Okay, so I'll declare the public comment period open at 7:30. And we'll start with online participants. You can indicate that you would like to provide a comment by clicking the raise your hand button found at the bottom of your screen. If joining by computer or the top of your screen, if joining by tablet, your microphone will be enabled one at a time until all online participants have had the opportunity to speak once. When you are unmuted by the host, you will see a dial-up box that says stay muted or unmute myself. Choose unmute myself if you wish to speak. Second, anyone who has phoned in will have the opportunity to speak. We will ask for callers to speak by raising their hands by pressing star nine and then pressing star six to unmute. Callers must take turns each until each call wishing to speak has had the opportunity to speak once. Comments will be limited to three minutes. And the same rules will apply to our public hearings. So public comment is for anything that is not on the schedule for public hearing this evening. So the conditional use will have its own public hearing. So we are now open for public comment. Mr. Luhan, do we have any hands raised?
Right now, we have one hand raised and it's Daniel Kettler. And I will move him into, as a panelist. So Mr. Kettler, I think, let's see, I don't know if that worked. Let me try that again. Oh, there he is, okay. So Mr. Kettler, if you unmute yourself, you have the floor.
All right.
Good evening, you're welcome.
Can you hear me all right? Can you see?
Yes, and if you would state your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Daniel Kettler. My address is 225 South Ashley Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48104.
Thank you.
And I sent a email package to the planning commission, sent it out Friday. I hope that each of you have received it. Plus, prior to that, I'd had a meeting with Jan and Doug about this issue. And it's specifically about the master land use plan. We sent in a request that the Crossroads Project, which is on the southwest corner of Wagner and Liberty, that that be rezoned to master, to a high density residential land use. The office project, which was approved there toward the end of last year. And again, this is, this is all of the information that was sent out to you in a couple of letters, plus in a package that you have now. You might not have had time to review it. So the Crossroad Project is as an office project because of the COVID and all the uncertainty to the office has pretty much destroyed the ability to move forward with that project. While there is a need in the township for multiple family. In fact, in the letters I sent to you folks, I put some examples of why I thought this would be a good idea and good for the township. But I also was looking through the master land use plan booklet. From 2000, 2019, there's been no building permits issued for multiple family. None, zero. And it's a, it's something that I think is probably, should be addressed within the township. And we think that our location would be a good place to do it. And one of the things that was in this package that I sent you too had to do with the idea of the, of a middle type housing. Before I did, we did the office, we had had to plan to do multiple family here. And I had worked directly with the people who coined the term of middle housing. And what we would do is carry that concept forward with this project. We've already had, the project is pretty sensibly designed. It's got infiltration system as for the stormwater sewer and extensive plantings. It's a, it's a nice project and it will lend itself to be turned into a multiple family project. So I guess I'm here to, so that if you have some questions for me, I would be glad to answer them. But it requests that that piece, that little parcel, 10.39 acres, I think it is, be the master plan as a high density residential land use and not what it is now, which is a limited industrial. And that's the reason for my talking to you this evening and for the fairly extensive things I sent you, so that you could be informed, well-informed by the reasoning behind this.
Okay, thank you. We did not, Doug, do you know, if, I know we got your letter, but I'm not aware of a packet. Do you know if that is pending distribution?
It was, according to Fran, it was sent out last Friday. I asked her again today and she emailed me and says, yes, it was sent to each of the planning commissioners. Whether it was or not, I don't know.
I did receive it.
It was, yeah, I did receive.
Okay, we'll make sure. Then we should note that back, amend our communication correspondence to note that. And I will check and make sure I got it as well.
Did each of you get it then? Mr. Hyde, did you receive a package?
Not that I'm aware of, but it may have come in.
Okay, well, it's, one of the reasons I was wanting to send it to you beforehand so that if you looked, did have a chance to look through it. I know the way these are, sometimes you don't have a chance to look at everything you receive that I couldn't answer any questions. But I would be glad to come to a future planning commission meeting to answer any questions if there was need to. But I just wanted to make myself available, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Typically with public comment, we don't enter into a discussion. And Doug, if you would just maybe brief everyone on what you see as the schedule for, you know, dealing with the feedback that we've got, we're getting on the master plan, just to make sure everyone's clear on process and so forth.
Yeah, we, we're in the comment period for, the review period really, for adjacent communities. So copies of the plan were provided to all of our neighboring communities as well as other governmental agencies, such as Washtenaw County and with the railroad and power companies, they all get copies of our master plan and then have the opportunity to provide a comment. They have 63 days, we're within that 63-day period. And then in addition to the 63-day kind of neighboring community comment period, this plan is also, the draft plan is also on the township website. And folks can provide comments. There's a link, there's an email address, my email and Laura's email, I think Jan's email, that you can provide comments to. I think we haven't had many comments yet from the public. We had a few and we're keeping them in a file. So, and Dan, Mr., you know, Dan Kettler's comments will be part of that group. And then once the 63-day time period is over with, which is roughly in the middle of August, we will assemble all of those comments, whether they be public comments or, you know, property owner comments and then some of the adjacent community comments. And I will provide some kind of report to the planning commission and we can decide, you know, what, if anything, we want to change. Planning commission and ultimately township board, if they decide to be the approving body, the planning commission is under no obligation to make changes that are suggested by our neighboring communities or others as far as that goes. However, it's a good idea to look at those closely. And I found that in most cases, from our neighboring communities that they are generally well thought out and we generally made those changes that they requested. So that's where we're at. You know, towards the end of August, we'll be, this will likely be back on a planning commission agenda to start digging back into the master plan.
Thank you. Do we have any other people who would like to participate in public comment?
Let me go back to the attendees. No one else has their hand up at this point.
All right, we'll just give it about 30 seconds and make sure no one is wanting to address the planning commission. All right. Okay, then we're moving on in our agenda to the, our business session. And we do have an advertised public hearing for conditional use number 21001, 1007 EWF Solutions, conditional use for mixed-use development. And we will open the public, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. And the way the public hearing goes, we will hear from the applicant and then our consultants answer any like questions of fact by the planning commission members and then open it up for comment to the public. And we'll close the public hearing by vote. And then planning commission will enter into deliberation. So with that, we have a motion to open the public hearing. Commissioner Hyde?
I would move that we open the public hearing.
A support, Commissioner Sharma? The motion to open the public hearing for CU number 21001. Roll call vote, please, Secretary Holland.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Corte?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma? Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes. And we are opening the public hearing at 7:42. And so I'll, we'll recognize the applicant. And Mr. Luhan, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So I have John Stevens and you can go ahead. Now I also see Ryan and Keith, they're also going to be presenting.
Ryan Yapel and Keith as well, and Jared Kime, if he's not on.
Okay, let me add them. That's, I just want to make sure I've got everybody, Jared Kime as well. Okay, I think I have everyone that needs to speak. So I just wanted to make sure I had everybody lined up.
Okay, so welcome. And please go, go ahead and tell us about your proposed project. Okay, so welcome and please go, go ahead and tell us about your proposed project. Just a reminder to give your name and address. And unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't want to click that mute button for a moment. My name is Ryan Yapel. I'm the owner of EWF Solutions. Currently my address is 3400 South Salt Lake Boulevard. Unfortunately, I have this trip planned before tonight's meeting. We are proposing a 30,000 square foot warehouse to be built upon this property. We're an existing e-commerce business located in the township, employing 12 individuals and looking to expand our facility as we've experienced rapid growth and as well as hiring additional staff to increase our operations. We primarily work with food products, grocery based products, including some major confectionery brands such as Hershey and Guredili Chocolate. And we're looking to build a new facility to accommodate our, our further growth and future growth in the township. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Thanks, Ryan. So what we, what we have here, and as you've all seen with the plans.
I'm sorry, Jared, if you could give your name and address also.
I'm Jared Kime with Atwell, coming to you from Hamburg Township, Michigan, Livingston County. So John, if you could share the site plan so everybody could see what we're talking about as, as we kind of go through here. The, the property as we, we came before you back in April, it's been a few months now, was originally zoned as agriculture. And we rezoned the property after meeting with, with, with Doug for the conceptual preliminary meeting to discuss the, the property. Rezoned it to C2 to be in conformance with the township master plan. With the conditions, obviously our, our use falls under a light industrial use, more of a packaging type or repackaging facility here, which is permitted as a part of a mixed use type development within the mixed use commercial designation of the master plan. So here we are before you with our, our site plan after taking in your initial feedback and considerations on how, how we can best present this property to you. We have a future out parcel designated along the frontage of the property on the south side of Jackson Road there to provide for the, the commercial retail frontage that is desired by the township with our larger industrial use building set further back in the property. As Doug mentions in his review letter, the property does have a lot of topographic relief. It falls from north to south. And where our proposed building is located is substantially lower than the elevation of, of Jackson Avenue there. So it, it will be difficult to see our building in and of itself. You may only just see the, the very top portion of the building as you drive down Jackson Road there.
Where is it? There it is. Sorry about that.
So, you know, we are certainly here, we'll answer any questions that you have on this. You know, being the first time that you've seen the, the actual site plan that we've prepared here. I'm sure there's a number of questions and, and feedback that you might have in relation to the adjacent properties and what we're, we're proposing on the development here. And we're happy to answer any questions. And then I guess, John, if we want to turn it over to you and you kind of show them the, the building plans that we have here, the conceptual drawings that we, we are proposing.
All right. So these are the.
And I'm sorry, John, if you could also.
Sorry, John Stevens, 2537 Baker Road, Dexter, Michigan. And I'm currently at McFiger upon Jackson Avenue. So this is the plans, the renderings for the building. In, we're in compliance with the Jackson Road overlay. We'll, we'll, we'll meet all of the requirements in terms of materiality. A lot of the design aspects that are for the district. So we'll, we'll be working to be fully in compliance with that. The building like Ryan said, is a 30,000 square foot warehouse with a, a small 5,000 square foot office in the front for their headquarters. So there'll be masonry, eight feet, eight to 10 feet all the way around the building with a Butler pre-engineered metal building as the primary structural frame. A, a nice smooth, we're, we're envisioning a smooth metal panel around the sides. And then for the front, we'll do like a concrete block, wainscote with brick and ACM panel accents around the, around the canopies and the eyebrows. Small little pedestrian plaza out in the front with seating. And what's not shown in the renderings at this point is heavy screening going down the east side, which would be adjacent to the future, potential future Woodview Commons PUD that's down there. I can show you the architectural site plan. Just for reference, I know this isn't, hasn't been a finally, a final approved. But you can see our intention with the, you know, the out parcel lot, kind of continuing that commercial zone. And then the distribution center back here kind of set back considerably from Jackson Road. And as Jared mentioned, it's about an eight foot drop from this building pad down to where we're at. So there will be considerable less visibility of our building from Jackson Road. And then the floor plans. So this would be, right now, this is the conceptual layout. North is up. So the front office space with the four or five offices, a conference room, some restrooms and a break room. And then inside here, it's really just a temper, there's a temperature controlled warehouse storage. And that's for Jared, or Keith and Ryan, they do some candy distribution. So keeping that temperature controlled during the summer months and the winter months as well. And then this would be the workroom where they repackage, package and repackage the candies and the goods that they service. What we've, we've come to know is we're not talking a whole lot of truck traffic. They expect two to, two to four trucks max a day. So those trucks aren't sitting there in the loading dock idling as well. They, they're there for, for quite some time to get loaded up and, and get out of there. So our hope is, is that the noise reduction from the trucks not idling. And we're not, we're not bringing in 30 trucks a day. We're bringing in two to four trucks a day tops. Can't think of anything else. Like I said, here's the material palette that we've kind of, you know, for the, for the overall look of the building. Brick, burnished block, some ACM panel, and then the Butler thermal wall flat panels. With that, I will open it up to any questions or any other comments from Jared or Ryan.
No, I think in, in summary, John, just kind of touching on some of the points from the, the master plan and as, as stated in the zoning ordinance, specifically speaking to the light industrial use that we have here. It is identified as, as an appropriate and desirable use designation within the mixed use commercial district, which this is. But specifically to, to touch on the, the noise aspect that you've mentioned there is that the light industrial, limited industrial district I1 specifically states that it's designed to create a low density development with spacious yards to provide attractive settings as well as to help reduce, to ensure compatibility with non-industrial neighboring lots. And specifically intended to permit only uses which emit minimum noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, dirt. So the light industrial designation and use of the property itself is not detrimental to any of the existing or potential future neighboring uses of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions of fact before we go to Mr. Luang's report? All right. So, Mr. Luang.
So this is, for those watching from home, this is a special, or what we call in the township, a conditional land use. And the reason it's a conditional land use is that the applicant is proposing two different uses on this piece of property. They're proposing kind of an industrial slash warehouse use in the central, the southern part of the property and a commercial use in the northern part of the property. Of course, right now, we don't know exactly what that commercial use in the northern property would be. However, that area is designated as commercial, that's a, you know, kind of a conceptual drawing of what, what might go there. The, the reason that we can consider this as a conditional land use is that the two uses the applicant is proposing on a single piece of property is within the Jackson Road overlay district. The Jackson Road overlay district allows multiple uses on the same piece of property with some conditions, but we call them, you know, multi, multi-use or mixed use developed. We just went through this Z Road with the drive-through facility. That was going, I think, Camaro bread was in front of us a couple of weeks ago. That was in front of us because drive-throughs only permitted in C3 zoning district and that's a C2 zoning district. So in kind of a similar manner, this is a proposed commercial on the front, office industrial on the back. And that's why it's in front of us. So as a conditional land use, this is one of those cases that the use is a, what we call a discretionary approval. And that the township has some discretion over approving or not approving this project. This is similar, or this is not similar to a use permitted by right. And that was if this was, say, zoned industrial and the applicant was meeting all of our minimum standards like setbacks and parking and building height and stormwater detention and all of those things. The township doesn't have a lot of discretion. They pretty much have to approve a straight site plan. But since the applicant is asking for something, you know, kind of, some ordinance is called a special land use. So I would say since they're asking for something special and that is a mixed use, the township has a little more leeway in, in the review. And generally speaking, what we're supposed to be doing is trying to make a determination if this particular use and how it's proposed will have a negative impact on both the property itself and the adjacent neighbors and the township as a whole. So conditional uses are those uses that may be allowed in all districts, but maybe not allowed in that. You know, maybe allowed in all districts, or I should say maybe appropriate in some locations, but not appropriate in other locations. And so that's what we have to try to determine is if what the applicant is proposing is appropriate in this location. So as you can see from our review, we go through, you know, all of the, the, the site itself, the surrounding zoning. We talk about the master plan. And, you know, if you've been out to the site, you know that this is a kind of a commercial industrial, you know, office planned that way, generally speaking, in the township. So having a warehouse in this particular location, you know, isn't shocking by any means. And it's, it's not out ordinary in, in really in this part of the township. So, you know, as far as what's going on around the property, you know, land use, master plan, we don't have any big concerns. We do note however, that although not approved yet, so it's hard to base an approval or denial on a project that's not actually approved yet. But we all know that the Woodview Commons PUD is proposed directly to the east of this project. And some of the applicant's drawings that they showed up a few minutes ago showed some of the outside edges of the Woodview Commons project. So again, that's not been approved yet. And I guess there's a possibility it, it might not get approved if, you know, if things don't work out for that developer. That being said, if it is approved, we would have some concerns with this particular use and particularly the loading dock. And the applicant tried to address that a moment ago and maybe they can expand a little further. The loading dock and the loading activities that might occur adjacent to some of the Commons PUD. Again, the Woodview Commons PUD is not approved yet. So it's hard to really base it, base this on a project that's not approved. But we would, we, we would like to see, since it is, there's a big residential component to Woodview, obviously. We would like to see some additional buffering and maybe a firm, in addition to the landscaping, located adjacent to the, the truck loading area that is proposed by the applicant, you know, at a minimum. So that's, that's one of the things that that would be something the planning commission could make a condition if they were to approve this project. Conditional land use allows the township, ultimately the township board, allows the planning commission and township board project. We can't normally make conditions, but planning commission can place conditions. The applicant doesn't have to agree with those conditions, by the way. The township can make conditions on a conditional land use to ensure that the use meets the conditional land use standards. So those conditional land use standards are found on, well, let me back up a little bit. We, we, our, our review also talks about natural, natural resources on the site. And so we, we note that, you know, probably the most significant natural feature on the site are the, are the trees on the site. And the applicant has shown a table that shows replacement trees, or shows trees to be removed and trees to be preserved on the table. Typically, we like to see that actually reflected in a plan. And for, particularly for those trees to be preserved, we like to see how those trees are going to be preserved and maybe, you know, show tree protection details and things like that. So we would like to see a little more detail, very specific on the plan itself, not just a table of those trees to be removed, those trees to be preserved and how they're going to be preserved. We are concerned, which I'll mention in a moment, about the trees to be removed. Really the intention of the woodland protection ordinance that City of Township has is that projects are designed to avoid removing trees because there is a penalty to remove trees. The current design of the warehouse, in particular the circulation area, pretty much clear cuts the entire, you know, the, one of the only areas where there is any kind of significant trees on site. And so we, in our comments on natural resources, we would like the applicant to look a little closer at seeing if there's opportunities on site to preserve additional trees, maybe some design changes. So we, we think more could be done to protect some trees on site for the applicant. And particularly the landmark trees that are being shown to be disrupted. So we really would like the applicant to take a closer look at that aspect of the plan. With regard to essential facilities and services, which are things like utilities and storm, stormwater and sanitary. Sally Boss and Stacy Sertor are here from OHM and they'll talk about those comments, those issues in a few moments. The, so really the crux, so those, so generally I, I talked about my concern. I've got two concerns. One is the Woodview Commons property to the east and how that's buffered and screened from truck, you know, truck loading and unloading. And then additionally, the tree potentially allowing some additional tree preservation on site. So that, that gets to what we're trying to do as a conditional use review. So this isn't site plan review. Site plan review will come next. There's a whole nother step to this process that the applicant will have to provide. You know, they provide a pretty detailed plan here, but they will have to provide detailed site plan after the conditional land use part of this. And so right now, all we're trying to do is And so right now, all we're trying to do is the township is to determine if this use is acceptable in this particular location. And we try to base that, we don't just say, yeah, it's okay, or no, it's not okay. Of course, we have to try to base that decision on the standards of the ordinance. And those standards in the ordinance are on page five of my report. And there are six of those standards. And they all really come down to, like I said when we started, you know, how does this use impact the site? How does it impact the adjacent neighbors? How does it impact the township as a whole? And, you know, if you're the reader, I won't read through all of these standards, but they're talking about things like compatibility with the township, compatibility with the natural environment. Is it harmonious with the objectives of the ordinance? You know, is it, will the proposed use be adequately served by essential public facilities and services? I'm sure Stacy and Sally will talk about that in a few moments. Will the use be detrimental or hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighbors, persons, property, or the public welfare? So these are all things we can look at with the special land use. Will a special land use create additional costs to the township? We're not supposed to be approving special land uses that are going to throw the township into financial problems with trying to maintain a site or police a site or something like that. I don't think that's the case. That's certainly not the case here. And then also, also, the last one is that it will be compatible with the township master plan. And I think the applicant indicated, I wouldn't disagree, that this, the general idea of a warehouse and light industrial, in particular the mixed-use aspect of it, would be compatible with the township master plan. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the township master plan. But where I do have some concern, and I had already mentioned that, is impact to natural features on site, and that is the trees, and then potential impacts to what likely will be an adjacent residential development to the east and how this might, how we might be able to mitigate both of those things, actually. And so I think the, you know, prior to this moving on to the township board, I think the applicant should try to address those two, those two items, both the natural feature preservation and potential impacts to adjacent properties. You know, otherwise, I mean, this is a relatively innocuous use, pretty low traffic generator, and according to the applicant, a pretty low truck traffic generator. So I think those are, those are my big picture issues. And you've got a copy of our reports. I'm not going to read through every page of it. But those are the two big issues we have. And I think, you know, prior to this going on to the township board, I think, I think we need those comments addressed and/or revised by the applicant. That is all.
Thank you. We'll move on to OHM.
Good evening, everyone. So we recommended approval for the conditional use of this plan in our review letter from June 15th. And we anticipate the use to be compatible with the existing infrastructure. We provided some preliminary site plan comments in our review letter, as you can see. And it's for the applicant's use in the next plan, or the next review of the plans for the site plan review. And we just wanted some additional information, such as utility clarification, some stormwater calculation comments, preliminary drainage area map, site accessibility, providing an access easement for the proposed outlot, and some other minor items that we've provided in our letter. As mentioned in both Doug's review and earlier, that these comments don't necessarily affect our conditional use review and can be addressed later in the review process. However, we are happy to answer any questions about our comments if you have any.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and move to our public. And the public participation rules are identical with the public comment for this public hearing. And so if folks that either want to identify, that want to speak, please identify by raising your hands or pressing star nine on your phones.
Could I ask the applicant to stop the screen share for a moment? There we go. Because I could not see the attendees if anyone wanted to speak. So, yeah, so just to repeat, if there's anyone, there are five attendees in the audience. If any of those folks would like to speak at this point on the public, on this public hearing, and that the public hearing is for a mixed-use development with commercial on the front and office industrial on the back, now is the time to raise your hand. And I do not see anyone raising their hand at this point.
All right, thank you. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Hyde. Roll call vote, please. And you're muted.
I know, I'm just writing down who made the motions. There's no place to do it, so.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Corto?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Coberson?
Yes. All right, the public hearing is closed at 8:10. So we'll move on to Commissioner questions.
Okay, I'll go. Go ahead, Jacqueline, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Commissioner Holland.
Yeah, Doug, this is the J-Rod district, right?
Yes.
Okay, so for the petitioner, how tall is your building?
We have, let me go back to the drawings real quick. We have a top eve height of 25 feet. So with the slope, it'll be 27 feet tall, roughly at the height.
That's not on all sides, you know, from what I'm seeing, it's as high as 32 feet. When you look at the low side where there's steps, four feet of steps going up. Is there a parapet on all sides?
There's only a parapet. It's a single slope roof, so there'd be a parapet on the front. We could put a parapet on the back, but it's such a low slope that we were hoping to only have a single slope parapet on the front.
How tall is your parapet?
Let me share my screen real quick.
Well, I couldn't, I was looking at the plan before, and I couldn't determine, I didn't see a dimension on it, so I'm not sure that sharing it will help.
I don't have a dimension on that, but it's roughly, actually, hold on, I have my model open.
Roughly two feet, you think?
Somewhere in that ballpark, but I have my model open right now, so I can give you a dimension.
Maybe 30 inches. I'd say it's more like maybe even three feet.
Three feet.
So if you look at elevation, east elevation B on page 37 of our, at least of our packet, I'm not sure where that lands in your packet.
Yes, it would, it would slope, it would, you're correct.
So it's, so you've got 25 feet plus four feet plus three feet. So it's getting taller and taller, and that's the side that faces what is potentially a residential area. And I believe that under the, and where's your HVAC equipment?
HVAC is up towards the front.
And the roof pitches to the back.
Roof pitches from west to east.
West to east.
And then we have a gutter and everything would be tied down on this side. And our HVAC equipment, current proposed locations are one up here for the office, and then these two back here for the temperature-controlled space, the warehouse and the workroom.
So tell me if I'm wrong. So you mentioned that G, you'd hardly see the building because it'll be so far below the road, but we'll be seeing the roof.
You will see it, but it's eight feet below, the finished floor is eight feet below where this pad would be. So if there's a building here, it'll still be.
We're just seeing the elevations right now.
Yeah.
So we have a 32, two-foot-high building with, okay, possibly HVAC equipment that has no parapet blocking it.
Well, the HVAC equipment is not roof-mounted. It's on the ground on the side of the building. And it would have the screening around it.
All of it.
Yes, no roof-mounted equipment.
Okay. So just wanted to get that clear, that the building is 32 feet high.
In the rear, yes, which would be on the south side of the building because the site slopes considerably.
But from the east, from the building on the east.
From Jackson Road, it's only 28 feet.
I understand, but from the, but with no parapet on that side, correct?
On the front.
The parapet is only on the front side. There's not a parapet on the east, west, or south ends there to add that additional three feet.
Jan, am I mistaken, but doesn't, don't, aren't we, they require to have a parapet in the Jackson Road overlay district?
So it's a single slope roof. So I have a parapet on the front where you would see it. On the west side, it is a flat line going across. And then on the, on the east, the west, east side, it would be a flat coming down to a gutter with downspouts.
Right.
And it's a.
So Doug and G, as far as the Jackson Road overlay district, aren't parapets required? Parapets or overhangs are required, right, Jan?
Screening is required of all rooftop equipment.
I think it's parapets. Jan, you and I wrote that.
We may need to check that to be sure.
It's in the ordinance, so I mean, the petitioner can check it as well, but.
Okay, we need to check that with the elevation.
You would want a parapet on the low side of the slope roof.
If that's what the Jackson Road overlay district calls for, you'd need a variance to not have it, as far as I can tell. Is that true, Doug?
Yeah, if it required, I'll look into that.
So Doug, how does, how does a mixed use work if they're putting in an industrial building? And what does that front parcel become as far as mixed use?
They're proposing that it be done in a, in a commercial manner.
Okay, so the mixed use, so they want that zoned commercial? Is that the idea, or?
It's all zoned, it's all.
Underlying C3.
Yeah, it's all currently zoned C2.
C2.
And, and so the front would still be zoned C2, the back part would be the mixed use part. So the front would have to, you know, the front would just be required to be C2. And what you guys are allowing, you know, what you may allow, may or may not allow, is that the back part be a mixed-use industrial. But the front would be required to stay C2. The whole thing is, the zoning does not change.
Gotcha. Gotcha, so. And as far as OHM, how, is the traffic, as far as basically the northeast corner of that property is right at the corner of Baker Road, correct? Is that ingress egress working okay?
Can you say that again? I didn't hear. Are you asking me?
No, I was asking Stacy or Sally, it's from OHM, that the, it appears to me that the northeast corner of their site is right at the Baker Road intersection, more or less, or the Baker Road right away.
Correct, correct. You are correct, Commissioner Holland. The, the current residential driveway is located basically right in the intersection. And I spoke with Gary Straight of the Road Commission this morning to see where they stood on their review. He's in the process of reviewing those, the plans this week. But in, I specifically asked him, I thought this question might come up, where they stand on our relocation of that entrance to the western property line. And he, he said, "We couldn't find a more favorable solution on the property with the limited furniture that we have." Their preference is to push it as far west as we can, which we have done, to get that separation from the intersection.
Are you guys seeing the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So I guess I have a couple of concerns. As one, I don't think it meets the J-Rod standards. Two, I see a building that is 32 feet high with their east elevation facing what we think is going to be residential. And I just have the feeling this is, is this, is this more or less a pre-engineered building? So I'm seeing a can, I just see that you presented a can building dropped on a lot, but that's, that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Well, it's our intention to not have a can building dropped on a lot. And I would hope that the renderings would support that vision of ours. We do not want to be bad neighbors. We've said this from the get-go. We want to be good, good Sire Township stewards. We love Ryan and myself. I live in Dexter, so, and I work right around the corner. We want to be good neighbors. We want to have a nice-looking building while fulfilling the needs of our client, and.
Can you show us the east rendering? I couldn't find an east rendering. Is there an east rendering?
This is as close to an east rendering as I have. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That's actually the west. That one there, there you go.
That one. So it's similar. We have, we have, we have a similar, one of these, these egress components with daylighting coming into the warehouse on that side. And on this side, I know it's hard to see, you'd have the downspouts coming in. Let me go to the elevation.
So you have no parapet, see, so on that east elevation, there's no parapet.
It's flat on that point.
But the parapet's only going to add additional height on there. We, you, you have the same effect there. There's nothing to screen from the roof because we have no rooftop-mounted equipment. You have that same horizontal line.
Here's the, here's the roof line. So the roof line starts here at three feet, roughly three feet up, and slopes down to 25 feet. It's a quarter-inch slope. A parapet on the front keeps it a flat, straight line. And then on every other elevation, it would be a flat, straight line, except for the rear, the south, which we were, we're more than happy to put a parapet there that would suffice. But there's no reason to put a parapet on the west. And a parapet on the east would only create issues with drainage.
I understand. So where is the east elevation you're going to show us?
The east elevation starts, this is at the north. So the east elevation comes here to the egress component out of the warehouse. Due to the sloping site, we have to build kind of a little egress component out. And then this match line right here lines up with this match line here. So you have the masonry wing, or the masonry, eight foot of masonry. And then you've got the metal panel with natural daylighting getting into the warehouse. So the site slopes about four feet from front to back, from this corner here to this back corner. And so you'll, you really won't even notice a roof slope on that, on those elevations. It's such a minimal slope roof that it'll appear a flat roof.
And that's where you're, that's where you're 32 feet high, correct? Right where your palm is right now?
At this corner here, with, if you, if we have to put a parapet, this would be 25 plus four, it'd be 29 feet down to this point.
Gotcha.
If, if we want to, if you want a parapet on the south side, then yes, we would be 32 feet, correct?
Thank you. I don't want to take any more time. Thanks.
Yep.
Right, and then Commissioner Corto.
So I share Planner Luann's concerns about the tree removal. And also, though, the concerns about if there is a residential component to the east. It feels like this is going to be just a very big block of building that will be facing that residence. So without seeing more detailed drawings about the screening, I am concerned. And furthermore, although I appreciate and understand that your use has minimal truck traffic, we do with this conditional use have to be aware that, you know, some other party could come in and use this building. and might generate a lot more truck traffic, which makes it very important to see how there will be screening on the east and that will help limit the noise and also the visual component. And then finally, you know, there are no wetlands on this site proper. And I do see the detention, they have some concerns about the stormwater management because to the south of this, um, it's draining into a series of wetlands that eventually get into a SiO preserve. Um, that's a, that's a very key natural resource for us. So, um, I, I would want to really understand very clearly the stormwater management, um, component, especially because the tree removal is going to cause a lot more stormwater to be managed um, in us, in that large roof. So just, I, I do have a lot of questions about, um, about this. And then finally, without knowing what that, um, that mixed-use component in the front lot will be, it's, it's, it's hard to get a sense of this site as a whole.
Un-understandable. And, uh, if I can touch on a couple of tho, those items there to address your concerns. Uh, the stormwater management, of course, will, will be designed to meet all of the, uh, requirements, criteria of the Washington County Water Resource Commission. Um, as we have proposed currently, the stormwater basin is going to actually function as a retention basin, meaning that the primary discharge for the basin will be into the ground to recharge the groundwater. We did, uh, a number of, uh, test pits out on the site under the, uh, supervision of the Drain Office. And we found, uh, very good sandy soils down there at the south end of the site, which is why that area was, uh, selected for the detention basin or for the retention basin here, um, to promote that infiltration that the, the Water Resource Commission is looking for. The emergency overflow discharge from the property would be piped down to those wetlands, but it would be going through all of the, the standard treatment options for, uh, detention basin under the, the county requirements with a, uh, forebay within the basin, then, uh, you know, extended detention time within the basin for, for infiltration before it reached a level where it would need to seek that relief, uh, for the discharge down to the wetlands on the adjacent properties. Um, we do understand your, uh, concern for the preservation of trees. Of course, this is a very, uh, a very narrow site, so we're very limited in, in what really any development can do on the property as far as moving east, west, north, south to try and, and, and save some trees on here. Uh, but we did take a look at some of, of Doug's comments here in preparation for the meeting. And, uh, we, we do agree that, that there may be some potential for some areas where we could potentially, uh, preserve a few more of the trees to try and increase some of that natural buffer between the, uh, the adjacent potential PUD project and our development, particularly down at, at the loading dock area. Uh, the, the grades in the pine trees that we have shown there are fairly close to existing grade there now. So we could tighten up that grading a little bit and try and preserve more of the natural, uh, mature vegetation that's there versus removing those trees and, and creating a berm to separate in there. And if there was still some concern with screening of that area, if the, you know, if the ma-mature trees are more canopy trees and you're not going to get that visual break that you're looking for, we could even, uh, look at putting, you know, like a, you know, say a, a six-foot-tall cedar fence behind the curb line of our loading area to create that visual break as well with the mature vegetated buffer between the two, uh, the two properties there. Now, we can't necessarily do that going down the whole property there because we do have the grade transition along the building. But adjacent to that loading area is an area that we could look at saving more trees in there. And I think there might be one or two landmark trees located in that area. Um, and the other, uh, area that we looked at is, uh, Doug had noted that we had a couple extra parking spaces than what was, uh, required based on our calculations. Um, if we were to look at removing a few parking spaces, we may be able to do something similar as I just described in the front parking area of, of our building, not, not the front, uh, future out parcel area, but the parking in the front of, of our building is another potential area where maybe that pavement could contract a little bit if we were to move a row or two of parking spaces in there to preserve more of that natural vegetation and, and, uh, mature screening between, uh, whatever future uses are going to be adjacent to there.
Are there other, uh, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate the applicant's response to the, trying to leave a few more trees, as, as many as possible. So some of these ideas that you've put out there will be very helpful. Um, or at least it'll go towards that. I do have some concern about, uh, the outlot buildings right now. I, and some of these questions, um, may not need to be answered at this time. But if, if the outlot is a commercial, um, building site, does your drainage, uh, does your stormwater drainage calculations have to include that property in it at this time as well?
Yes, it does. We, we've incorporated the anticipated, uh, impervious area from that site to be included in our stormwater basin, so it'll all be accounted for.
Okay. And when you showed the aerial view, uh, that included wood view comments, it wasn't aerial view, it was the planned view. Um, it, I, that was the first time I took note of it, so I apologize for not checking this out ahead of time. But, uh, perhaps Commissioner Colbertson or Commissioner Holland would be able to answer this. Or, or Jay, I'm sorry, or Doug. But I noticed all the, uh, commercial buildings along Jackson Road are oriented parallel to Jackson Road. Is that a requirement or not? I know in this narrow lot, you've shown it parallel to the east-west lines and not the front of it, parallel to Jackson. Is that acceptable in the overlay district?
Um, yeah, there, there's no requirement that it be perpendicular or, you know, parallel, perpendicular to.
Okay, I know we're going for a look, but I didn't know if that was part of it.
And we, we showed that as a proof of concept, um, just to show that something of that site or size and magnitude would fit on that out parcel lot. Um, at this time, Ryan has no desire to develop that as, as part of his business model. That would be something that would be, uh, a future, either sell, sell that land to a developer to develop that or a future use.
I get that. And, and that, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking you needed to have that, that fully developed. But if it was included in the calculations and you had to reorient things, it might throw those calculations off as where I was going. So that, that moved. Um, I think that's about all I have for right now. I would, I would encourage re-looking at the tree line uh, along, well, the east side of the property, especially back by the loading area. But, um, I agree with Commissioner Holland that having a warehouse view right next to a residential development is not as desirable as some views.
Noted, um, but it should also be noted that, uh, immediately south of our, our site here is an existing, uh, metal prefabricated structure as well. Um, so it, it is, uh, very similar to the views that they already have. Um, you know, adjacent to where these multi-story, uh, senior housing and, um, multifamily buildings would be. Our homes will look much better than, than what is there as well.
Can you show that on the map, on the, on the drawing?
Uh.
That facility?
It's right here. It's not on our site, but it is right down here. It's a large, green, pre-engineered metal building.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Moore?
I don't, I have a question for, uh, Mr. Luan. I was looking at the conditional uses in the, um, in the zoning ordinance for the C2 designation. And I don't see a warehouse listed as conditional, as, as part of a possible condition use.
You're muted, Doug.
Never learned, never learned. Um, this is being proposed.
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at number twelve, the C2, and then number C is conditional uses one through twelve.
Yeah, and, and so, uh, beyond, beyond the C2 designation, uh, because this site is found within the Jackson Road overlay district, the Jackson Road overlay district allows for industrial uses and commercial uses and office uses, um, as a special land use. So that's, it's not, you're, you're not going to find that in the C2 district. It would be in the Jackson Road overlay or the J-Rod district that talks about this.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I think, um, Commissioner Holland, um, touched on this issue in a couple ways, but specific to the six standards that we look at for conditional uses. Um, I'm focusing on standard number two, will be a compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. And, um, number four, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighbor uses, neighboring uses, persons, property, or the public welfare. Um, I think I said this last time we were here, when we were talking about the rezoning. I was concerned about the Woodlands, um, possible project being right next door to this project. And I, 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 I don't know if, um, the applicant knows this, but there's a, there's going to be a pathway, as I understand, as part of the woodland project that will go right north to south, right along the east side of your property. Um, so I would be looking at, I know that, um, Mr. Luan mentioned this in his, in his, um, in his remarks, in his memo, a berm. And I don't know if it's possible to even put trees up there on that berm. Um, that would kind of give some cover for the, the layout, the commercial look of the property. Um, so that would be something that I'd like the applicant to take a look at. Um, and, um, I think everything else that I wanted to bring up has been covered by other commissioners, but, um, I don't, I don't really know from, from looking at your drawings and, I don't know, um, how high that we need to be or, or, or whatever. But I just wanted to put that out there for the applicant to know what some of my concerns are. Um. And then I guess that I, I wanted to piggyback on something Commissioner Cotto mentioned, which is the drainage into the Woodlands that drain into some wetlands back there in the southern part off your property. Is that correct?
Yes. That's where, that's where all of the, the stormwater on the site naturally goes now. And we're following the, the ultimate outlet conditions for that, for any stormwater that does not infiltrate into the ground.
The difference being is that you're going to have more concrete, right? So right now, there's more, there's more.
The increase in, right, correct. The increase in impervious area is the, the reason for the detention requirements. Um, and, and the detention of, in and of itself, uh, with the, with either a restricted or in this case, the, uh, primary outlet of infiltration into the ground will, will deal with that change in the, the rate of runoff that you would see with any development.
And of course, um, there, there's a senior living component to the Woodlands project, which would be right along the west, it would be east side for you, west side for the Woodlands project. Though I believe it is a two-story project, so, um, in keeping with what some of the remarks that Commissioner Holland made. Um, and then I think the last issue that I wanted to bring up was, um, geez, I forgot. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a, a couple of, um, questions and comments. And, um, one on the, um, the warehouse building. Um, I, I feel really strongly about really looking at the interface between, um, the proposed, uh, PUD and this space. Um, I don't know, it looks like you're doing quite a lot of grading. Um, and if you, um, perhaps buried the building a little bit more, um, is it possible to retain more of the mature trees along there? Um, and also that it, you're introducing, you know, on the one end where the trucks are, um, you know, noise from truck traffic. And then you're also introducing the noise from all the mechanical equipment at grade. And so I have concerns not only with the buffer of a visual buffer and maintaining some of the, um, the beautiful canopy along there, which really needs to, in my mind, stay because of the pathway that's scheduled there. Um, and then also, I think your idea of trimming the parking lot to maintain some of the, the, um, mature woodland would also be good. And then, uh, um, I, I think there might be, um, opportunity, um, even in the commercial space to see, you know, um, you know, look at trying to maintain as much of that buffer all along there just by restricting the, the footprint parking, the, in, in the grading up there. And it may put some more restrictions on that particular, um, development. But I think preserving that buffer, uh, between the two sites is, is really, really important. Um, and, um, and to me, that's, you know, both from a noise and a visual, uh, noise and visual component. Um, and that, those, you know, that's, that's a pretty primary concern. The other thing is, you've got a whole big roof there. Can you do something to generate some power with it?
Are you asking for solar panels?
There's been, there's been some preliminary discussions about that.
Do look into it because there may be some, um, like, I've seen some analysis where there, there's actually positive cash flow there. Um, the other thing I know that, um, uh, Meyer is, uh, now using GeoExchange, um, for the refrigeration. And that might be something to look at, uh, because that would, you know, kind of change the character of the equipment, um, that you might be using out there. Yeah, uh, Commissioner Holland?
I have a question for Doug. So Doug, from my experience, typically mixed use comes through as PUD. Is that true?
Um, no, not, I mean, that, that is a pretty common way to do it. However, the Jackson Road overlay does allow this.
Yeah, so I guess basically, if, if we were to, if, if we approve this, then the outlot basically has straight zoning and they can just develop it however they want by right, correct?
Yeah, so it'd be a C2 zoning. I mean, you guys could place some conditions on it depending on what those, you know, because we are looking at a full mixed use, so if you wanted some additional buffering on the east side of even the retail unit, you could, you could require that.
Well, we, we suggested on their first go-around that maybe they participate in the pathway instead of sticking Biltmore with the entire development cost of that. But they apparently didn't hear that. So, um, you know, things that we may condition may or may not fly. So thanks.
Other question. How thick is this, uh, uh, tree cover at the present time? I'm not clear on that still. Do you have any pictures that shows the boundary line around the west looking east? Just to get an idea, like.
Uh, you're, you're referring to as you were to stand on grade looking through it?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Uh, no, we don't have any, any photos of the site. Uh, no, we don't have any, any photos of the site looking through the, the vegetation there. But as you can see from the aerial overlay that we have up on the screen right now, the, the majority of that wooded area lies on the adjacent parcel there. So, you know, depending on exactly where that, that pathway lies, or how they were intending on, on constructing that, whether it's going to meander in and out, or, or through the trees, or, or whatnot, you know, it would be located over on, on that property. And we maintain, obviously, you know, we're, we're not proposing to clear any trees on their property there. And, you know, we can look at preserving some areas of the, the existing vegetation on ours as, as much as we can with the limited ability to move things east and west on our property.
You would not be affecting that vegetation under any circumstances during construction? It's on their side?
The, the pathway? The pathway is on their side.
And the vegetation too, right?
The majority of the vegetation appears from the aerial that is on their side of the property.
Yeah.
Uh, there is, there is some located on, on our side. And as we talked about, you know, we have, have the potential in some specific areas where we can try and, and maximize that preservation on our property as well.
I heard a mention about the pathway, because I know that came up just a few moments ago. There has been some preliminary discussion internally, especially because we do need that, that stormwater emergency outlet to assist with that pathway. We're still in talks as far as what that'll actually look like. But we're open to, like we said, we want to be good neighbors. We want to help the community. We ultimately want our business to succeed as well. But we, we want to be a good part of the community. We've looked at other sites, and we're trying our best to do everything we can to make this work.
I just have one other question. I just remembered. I wanted to ask the applicant, do you have a timeframe when you want to develop the commercial front end of the property? I know there's been some concern about, about outlets being left and undeveloped for years. So I was just wondering if you in your mind had a timeframe for when that would be developed?
So, so development of the out parcel is not within Ryan's business plan. It is not, you know, he's not a landlord or, or a developer, like you would see for the adjacent PUD where they're looking to build all types of structures and lease them out to other individuals. He would be looking to sell that out parcel to an individual, you know, property owner to develop that, or to a, to a, a retail developer who would then lease that to someone else. It is not in his business plan to develop that. And our intent with construction of this, this property, one, we would, we would have to demolish the existing residence that is currently located on that, which occupies the majority of that area, as you can see in the overlay here on the screen right now. So there's, there's really very, very little vegetation in that area. It's a, you know, it's a garage, an open backyard, fenced-in backyard area, and the residence with a couple spotty trees within that area. But we would, we would demolish that, do our, our site grading is needed for our development there. And we would grade up with, you know, the required slopes one on four to match in and, and leave that pad in its, you know, more or less natural state for a future developer or user to, to develop to their needs.
And Commissioner Moore, to give you a little bit of clarity from what I know, I've had discussions with a couple of folks about this as we're working through our internal part of this project. And there's significant interest because of the location and obviously being near a very large interchange. So I've, I've already started discussions with folks. My goal is to find someone to purchase it as reasonably soon as possible after we're able to start moving through things.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say one thing too, with the, the path that ties in here as well, on the landscape plan, if I can go back to that. One thing, one of the main reasons why we went with that well outside of, we like Jared, is their familiarity with the, the site. They're doing the wood, the PUD next door. So keeping the landscaping consistent, that was one thing I believe Commissioner Holland mentioned, was, you know, tying into that pedestrian path that's going to be there. We've had discussions with Jared and his team, the other team that was working on the PUD, and continuing the landscaping that would come across Jackson Road from the PUD onto our site. So having a contiguous site landscaping that would run along Jackson Road, that would create kind of a unified front on Jackson Road, that would tie everything into, tie everything together, so to speak. And as well as, we don't necessarily know exactly where that pedestrian plaza, pedestrian road comes in, but we have had conversations internally about, you know, in the PUD, there's a, a very nice welcome, I believe, Welcome to Silo Township sign and a pedestrian plaza here. And with the, the narrowness of our site, we just didn't really feel like having another pedestrian plaza or something like that would be beneficial. But continuing the landscaping and really trying to tie the two sites together. And that would go, that would be similar to down on this pedestrian plaza. I, I agree. And I think we, we are more than amenable to do something, screening, buffering, whether you prefer a, a berm, a fence, bushes, something that would, more landscaping in this area that would contribute to a positive experience on that path. And we most definitely will look into keeping more of the natural trees. We're totally amenable to that. It's actually preferred. And we will, we will do our best to keep as many of the natural and existing trees as possible. And creating a, a walkway, you know, we don't know, necessarily know how far off of our property line that walkway is going to be at this point in time. But creating that experience with the, the PUD and the pedestrian plaza, something that we can contribute to make that a, a positive experience, walking, you know, walking or biking on that pedestrian plaza, or pedestrian walkway.
And to, to piggyback on that, we, we also reflect there at the, the north corner of our building, a, a proposed connection from our interior sidewalk of, of our building, John.
Oh, sorry.
Connection, connection over to that pathway system. So, you know, the, the employees from here can, can easily access that pathway and walk to other areas in the, the community as well.
Yes. And we will, we will be having screening around these mechanical units. That's, we're not planning on just having, you know, these units sitting there, whether that's tall bushes, landscaping, or a fence, a nice cedar fence, something, whatever the planning commission kind of deems more desirable, we will, we definitely will have that into the, the site plan approval process.
And what's the distance from the edge of the building to the property line?
One second. Do we have the dimension on the, the site plan, John? I know our, our side yard setback is, is 20 feet, and we're beyond that.
Come on. I'm looking right now. Goodness. Stop beeping at me. It's approximately 30 feet, 35 feet.
Okay, so-
The side setback is 20 feet. Yeah, so it's about 35 feet from the property line to the building.
All right, so Planning Commission, do you want to, is there a motion with contingencies? Is, or conditional, conditions? Or do we want to see some more numbers coming back to address the concerns that have come up? Commissioner Carto?
I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to consider suggestions around preserving trees and adding more buffering. And I'm not comfortable moving forward with a conditional land use approval tonight until we have seen those. So I would offer a move to table this conditional land use request. And I do have some specific requirements if you think a move to table is appropriate at this point.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Hyde?
I would concur with Commissioner Carto on postponing approval.
Commissioner Carto's suggestion to table, I also have some concerns about the HVAC, or in some cases, we might want to call them refrigeration units, that actually, but what is potentially the senior living center on the adjacent property?
Okay, so then if I could have someone take a stab at a, a motion considering the, the comments that, and concerns that people have voiced. And there is the model language for the, the tabling.
So Jed, how does this work? I do not concur. So how do I?
Then it, it would be simply, you, you can vote no to table with the, if the motion makes it, it, we haven't made the motion yet, but yeah, you can go, you can go ahead and, and make your comments that you don't think we should table it.
Yes.
Or you can make a motion to approve, or deny, or whatever.
Okay, okay. Just, just give me some guidance there. Okay.
Commissioner Carto?
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
I would move to table the conditional land use request for conditional land use number 21007, EWF Solutions Mixed Use Development, to allow the applicant to respond to the comments discussed tonight by the planning commission, including the following. One, further information on whether and how mature trees can be preserved, especially along the eastern property edge, for visual and noise buffering, and whether more landmark, landmark trees can be preserved on the site. Two, further details on conditions that could be placed on the out parcel to maintain a buffer and trees along the eastern edge. Three, further details on how the design details of the building, including the parapets, match the requirements of the Jackson Road overlay district. And four, further details on how the noise of the mechanicals, especially including the refrigeration units, as well as the truck noise, will be buffered.
Is there support?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sharma?
No. Uh, I, uh, yes, I support that, that language there.
Okay, all right, all right.
I didn't quite-
A motion and support? Um, any other discussion? Then a roll call vote on the motion to table the conditional land use request?
Do you have a discussion?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Commissioner Hyde?
Thank you. Do we want to include in the points that they address also your, Commissioner Culverton's comments about grading, perhaps to retain some of the, as a means of, or do we want to leave that entirely up to the applicant?
I, we can, we can leave that because they'll have to maintain more of the grade to maintain the trees.
Okay, very good.
We talked about the burns.
Yeah. All right.
Call a question?
Yes, Commissioner Moore? Was it call a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Roll call vote, let's go.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Culver, uh, Commissioner Carto?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Culverton?
Yes. All right. The, and we are tabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being willing to take a look at things. All right. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. We have SP number 18012 Silo West Center, the site plan is extension request. And I believe Joe Maynard is here. And Joe, I'd like you to, just briefly, if you could, since this is a new planning commission, primarily since this became before the planning commission, and I think you're doing both of them, if you could just perhaps briefly put up a site plan and just a summary of, of the development?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So I can share my screen here and give you a quick overview of the development. This one's currently being requested for extension. So give me a second here. Whoops, let me, you might, let me make sure you can share. Oh, says I can. Says all panelists, so you should be able to. Okay, so. Okay, so with that, you should be seeing the wrong project. Give me one second to switch. About that, okay. Did I mute myself?
You're good.
Okay, all right, sorry. All right, so Silo West Center. This project was approved in 2018. It is currently a vacant parcel of land that only has a small, you know, asphalt lot with the entrance off of Jackson Road at this time. The proposed plan was to develop it to a office contractor retail sales with, you know, visitor parking in the front, rear overhead doors. It was geared towards some contractor, contractor uses and things like that. As you can see, it's just one single story building with a looparound parking lot. As far as the, it's pretty minimally graded. You've got the front fencing. I can show you the landscape plan here. There we go. So you've got your required J-Rod fencing and landscaping all along the front, around both sides of the property for landscape buffers, trees and so forth around the property. It was also set up with underground infiltration system. So 100% of the project of stormwater would be infiltrated underneath the parking lot. Garbage dumpster enclosure, basically met all the requirements. Give you a quick idea of the building facade. Here's kind of the building layout. So you've got, you know, different suites with around 1,400 to 1,500 square feet per suite, with the option to combine suites if, if the owner had leasing, they wanted more than one unit. Building facade, the building was designed with basically parapets and meandering roofs on all four elevations. You've got the south elevation here, which is the side facing Jackson Road, different shopping centers, different, you know, materials, brick. I'd have to zoom in here for you so you can see this a little better. Almost works here. There we go. There you go. So you can see you've got different masonry, brick panels, aluminum fascia, full glass windows and doors, and fully enclosed dumpsters all the way through the front, including, you know, sides. Because we do have a close neighbor to our north side, the rear side of the building was also designed similarly with the high parapet walls and giving it the same architectural features, so that it gave it a good, complete round view of the building on all, all sides. So the rest of it's just details. So the rest of it's just details.
Okay. Yeah. So do you want to just briefly summarize the reason for the extension?
Sure. The reason for the extension, um, mostly is because of COVID restrictions. Um, when this building was previously approved, the order was out seeking leases. Um, COVID restrictions kind of came on, um, as they were getting closer to being able to construct. So building material costs have increased. Um, you know, right now it's harder to lease office space and retail space like this right now. Uh, so we're still working on that. So, um, asking the additional extensions so that he can finish searching for leases and be able to bring this project forward for construction.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Mr. Luang, do you have any comments?
Um, no, no comments, it, it, you know, except that the, this will ultimately go on to the township board. Uh, we usually do the, um, site plan extensions. Uh, we've traditionally gotten a recommendation from the planning commission and then it'll go to the township board for, for, um, the extension. This project, I believe, based on the minutes and, uh, already received one extension. Um, so this would be its second. Uh, the first extension was for a year. So really the only, one of the issue is if the planning commission believes that extension is warranted. And two, how long, uh, you would like it to go for? And I guess part of the length, yeah, usually, um, usually it has to do somewhat with the desires of the applicant. If they think they need six months, we'll, you know, we'll only do it for six months. If they think they need it for a year, you know, typically a site plan extension is a year. Uh, this is the second one. Um, you know, the only issue with site plan extensions are, that we have to be concerned about is if the ordinance has changed since the, since the site plan was, um, uh, first approved. And in this particular case, there's been, there have been no changes to the ordinance that would affect, uh, this site plan. So the site plan that they provided and that, that to Mr. Maynard showed, um, you know, meets ordinance requirements and would continue to meet ordinance requirements. So it's really up to the planning commission whether you want, you know, if you think that this, uh, extension is warranted and if it is warranted, how long? If you don't think the extension is warranted and the township board also didn't think the extension is warranted, then the site plan simply would expire. And, um, if the applicant wanted to continue, they would have to resubmit a plan and basically start over. So that, that's really the choice we have. If we, if we have, you know, some idea that this project is a go at some time in the future, probably want to give them an extension. Uh, if not, um, you know, we don't, you don't want to keep giving extension after extension after extension, uh, particularly if there's changes to the zone ordinance. So that's, uh, that is all I have in, um, answering any questions. If anybody has any.
So I have a question. Did, um, did you say that we've already approved the site plan?
Yeah, this is, this was approved over a year ago. So what, what happens is site plans are, are valid for one year. They have, they have a one-year timeframe. And if, if for whatever reason, an applicant, uh, can't, you know, build the project, you know, according to ordinance, unless they get an extension of the approval, they have to, um, uh, or I should say, unless they get an extension, the site plan expires. And then they have to reapply and go through the whole process again. The applicant obviously would like to avoid going through the whole process again. And so they're just looking for an extension.
I see. And I have a, a question for the applicant. It's 6860 Jackson Road. Where is that at? I apologize if not been by that property yet.
Um, so this is not too far from, um, Baker Road. Um, let me see if this plan has an overall drawing.
And is that on the north side of, of Jackson or the south side of Jackson?
I just did a share there, guys. Is that about where it is, Joe?
Yeah, actually it's that vacant lot. Yep, right there. Um, you can see there's Ann Arbor Arms, right?
Right.
What is that?
Uh, Natty Drive is Ann Arbor Arms.
Yeah. Yep.
And then this is, is it down here? Is it across from Silo Farms, basically?
It's right there, that vacant lot, uh, right where your hand is, where that drive line comes in.
It's right in front of Silo Farms.
Nope, no, other side of the street. Sorry.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep. That vacant lot just to your left.
This one.
Right there.
Gotcha. So this, this, this is the lot that has the gas, the, uh, gas cylinder people. Right? And, yeah.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions? Commissioner Carteau.
Thank you. So again, from Mr. Luang, just, what are sort of precedents for continuing to do repeated extensions? And given that there's some uncertainty about whether there will actually be tenants interested in office space at this time, as we just heard from a previous applicant tonight. Um, I'm, I'm just concerned about leaving an application open sort of indefinitely. So, so, so what is the planning commission typically done?
Um, we, we've typically done an extension or two. I don't know that we've ever gone much to three or four. So like the second extension isn't that far out of, you know, out of the realm of normal for, for the planning commission. Um, I, I start to get a little more excited about it when they start to come in for the third or fourth because at that point, it's looking like the project's not going to happen. But, um, I don't see, you know, personally, I don't see any harm in one more.